Okay, all right, thank you. Just, we are now on live broadcast and we want to welcome our, the folks who are listening in virtually. Just to let you know that this is our board work session and in typical fashion, it's a lot less formal than a regular business meeting and we are already in session so we don't have to do the phone call and all of that. So we're going to move right into our board planning session and ask the superintendent to chief to be giving us an update on our safety piece.
Yes, so you know that you are designated Hamilton County to bring in the red and we anticipated according to Commissioner Petraman that we would be in the orange this week. We are still in the red and so I think it's appropriate to give you an update so that you know why. So on Thursday when it was announced we were still in the red, I had a conversation with two members from the health department, Dr. Moore who is the commissioner and then Dr. Meach and she is the epidemiologist. And then yesterday Sarah Campbell Oliver and I have to with a smaller advisory team of healthcare professionals about this area specific topic. And so out of that meeting, I'm going to give you a high level overview and then Sarah will be able to give you any detail that you may need. What was stated in that meeting, again, these are healthcare professionals saying that the incidence curve is pretty flat for Cincinnati, that the 30-day period in the last 30 days has not produced a significant change. Also that we have two months of data as it relates to many school districts who have already been in person learning and that there is extremely low transmission of students getting it to other students for this area or to adults. We're mainly seeing a transmission in Athens. And so again, this is not Cincinnati Public Schools saying this, this is the healthcare professional. The other major thing that we talked about is from the healthcare professionals that we need to be able to really manage our expectations around COVID-19. There are going to be positive cases, but we need to work extremely hard to put proportionary measures in place and we know that we are ready for that. We do have a plan as it relates to the operations of the building, which also includes on a daily basis, students who are sent to the isolation room, there are the registered nurses who will be there. The registered nurse will make a determination as to whether or not that child needs to have a COVID test. The registered nurse will be able to provide the COVID test on site and we have a courier system to get it to Children's Hospital with a pretty fast turnaround time on the live result to identify whether or not the child should report to school the next day or not. All of those conditions are in place. In addition to daily safety hurdles that we will be conducting with all of our principals in small cluster groups to ensure the proportionary measures are in place, we'll be able to collect that data. So Sarah, the last piece that I would like to be able to bring to your attention is that, and this is from the healthcare professional, not from CPS, that as we consider reopening and our designation, we need to balance it against our students staying home and the negative impact that has on them in terms of social emotional work and access to teaching in addition to all of the other wraparound services that we offer within us. But this time I'm going to ask Sarah to present some very specifics around the data.
Sure, so as the superintendent mentioned, we had a huddle with our city medical advisory group, the health department, and Children's Hospital and kind of just really got their, them to weigh in on the COVID red rating and how it affects our school opening plans. When we look at the city specifically, looking at the past 14 days, which is what we've been looking at, they have seen a couple of days with higher number of cases per day, but according to them, it's not out of the normal variation that we've been seeing over the past month or two. And not enough to impact our school opening plans. The new data that Laura mentioned that we didn't have before is what is the certain amount of community spread, how does that impact schools that have opened already? We didn't have that data until now. And so the health department shared with us that there is little to no spread within the schools that have opened personally. One case, it was, it was related to athletics. And so that's, and that's almost two months that many of them have been open of the non-public charters in the city. So their conclusion is that their safety measures have prevented clusters from happening in the schools. They have also observed that our safety measures are even more strict robust than the schools that have already opened, especially the daily testing that Laura mentioned. They are not aware of any pool or sort of the school district that are in that. And so, so that was their conclusion and their interpretation of the city data.
Thank you. Questions or comments, board members? This is Murawski, Mr. Lindy, and Mr..
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, superintendent. Just had a couple of questions. I'll start with the easy one. If we do go to purple, will we close again?
So that was what we proposed in the model at the last board meeting last Monday night. It's purple, it is distance learning, and in red, it is either distance or blended based on other measures.
Now, but, so that was kind of my next question is, I left the last board meeting a little confused about like what version of red is concerning because the cases are going up. There are most cases in Ohio on one single day and just two days ago. Hamilton County has a ton of cases. And with all due respect, I'm not very interested in other schools and their ability to not have any cases because they don't have the same population or they have not kids. We have more, they have the same. So what version of red is distance learning and what version of red is okay? Is that how I think?
So I would think we would rely on our city's advisory groups, advisory group that we put together, definitely since we're with that. But for example, they have already put together their own COVID coding system, which is for city for schools. They have seen that report, the school measures to, sorry, the COVID metrics to support school aim, and that's the county health department, the city health department, children's. And they have a threshold set for when schools should be on distance learning. And it's, it's a calculation of a daily new cases per capita using a seven day average. On their COVID coding system right now, we are in the hybrid. We're in their combination with hybrid and we're very close to their calculation. So I think that would be an additional measure there, every day of guidance.
In addition to the positivity, there is a number of days that it takes to get the results and we, on one front, like in reports.
And the 14-day.
And right now, we're still in the two reds in terms of our positivity.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate that the upper nurse, the director, because if you're repeating the question, we get to test and let you know, it's good.
Children's Hospital is a great part in our group.
Great. Yeah, I have to be really quick. I wanted to say I think we're doing the right thing and I want to say thank you. I also want to say that I think it's so great that there are a lot of medical professionals who want to play this role. I wish we would have this, because I think that's a big difference between what was true then and where we are now.
Do you think they have some, just the art's on you, but or about that? You've been meeting at Children's Hospital and talking with the health department since April.
I appreciate that too. And I could be incorrect. My, what I remembered was that there weren't medical folks who were with us as having that. If I was wrong about that, I apologize.
But they weren't willing to go on the record, but I just wanted to be clear that we have been working with the healthcare professionals.
So, thank you.
Melanie?
Yes, I disagree with Mike, but for a different reason. I do care about what the other districts are doing because they're looking at us. They're not getting.
What's it the district, five schools?
Well, and not they are too. I mean, they are not getting the information that we are. Any of these project local other districts are not getting the same information. And what we do influences the region and I know, and I, you know, I guess I just recently came to that realization, you know, we're not independently making decisions for our kids. We are, we are leading the region with our information because we're getting it. And with us going to blending and the other districts moving to blending, it seems like now we're finally all kind of in line as a region looks that way. So I'm, you know, I definitely support us going to blend it as long as families have other options, if they don't want to send their children to our schools. And I talked to Laura about the preschool options, we was kind of just. Also, I also want to reinforce that I do think, and I know Laura's working on it because the board asked her to, that we need to be proactive and have the masks on campaign. And somebody mentioned to me that, you know, if the kids are leading it, we should call it the masks on for me and make it really personal and have our children out in the community, you know, on, on making videos, of course, going through our communication and engagement department and leading that way in the community as well as we are leading with information. So I do think we're on the right track and I do think it's, even from a safety standpoint, what we're seeing and the information that Laura's receiving, the institutions are doing a good job of keeping, you know, keeping their facilities sanitized and their protocols in place. It's the community where we're seeing the transmission.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I just want to say, the thing that I appreciate you saying there is COVID is a piece of the safety story for some of our families and then there's the whole rest of the story. And there was an NPR, I wonder if everybody saw that yesterday, that was basically from the people who are poor, from the people who are experiencing homelessness and how devastating the closure of schools did. Did anybody see that? I'm going to share that because it gave me a view of the people that have been wondering where they are. And it was fascinating and I trust NPR's, my flawed piece. And I think to me, like the gist of the woman said, COVID is like the least of my worries. All of these other things for my kids and I am devastated. So I'm going to share, there were three articles, The Atlantic, NPR, and one other that I think would be useful that all got to me yesterday. And then the only other thing is, I thought it was interesting, again, to the demographic that we're serving, I had a member of, of the community that, again, is part of that demographic we've been looking for. And I thought her question was a good one and I didn't know the answer. She said, I think so much, so many of us are being served by your community preschool providers that I haven't seen anybody not go to our preschool. That's kind of the demographic you're talking about. So I think that's another opportunity for us to watch the response of the community in how they're behaving.
So Eve, the joke.
Yeah, I think it's, it's verbiage more than anything about information and I like that we're using the word instead of other information, additional information, because that's a completely different message that we are not, we didn't, because the people that are worried about us or upset with us, we just changed which data you were using. Now, we have more data, we have more sophisticated data that can be better articulated. So it's additional data that's helping inform us. And as Mike says, and Melanie on the other people from other districts, the charters, the privates, I do, I do remain interested in what the other school districts, and especially Hamilton County, are doing. And not only from the protocols, but also how are they, how are they educating kids? I think we can all learn something from all of those folks. And they do have a different population perhaps, some of them do. They also might have easier times of, you know, they don't pay for buses, like kids who lost it. It's all differences, but there are ways to learn. And I think that was, that was very helpful when you shared, well, they may be doing this, but, so I think this is, this is with us and our kids can't keep footing the bill or trying to stop community spread because other folks are not necessarily, you know, the children are getting educated. And so it's, it's hard, this is very hard for them. We're sort of where we are, but it's additional information.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, superintendent.
My last, I will say is that this advisory team has agreed to come together with us each Friday, have the data to be, and announce on Thursday. If it's okay.
Thank you. Well, thank you to superintendent and then Mr. Campbell Oliver for the update of, just to close it off, I also want to say I really, really like the idea of the mask on for me. Here we go. Sometimes, you know, we have to give credit where credit is due. Our kids want to come to school for the most part. And I certainly understand the data and I understand the concern that the community has about where we are in the codes and what that means. But I would also encourage the board to, you know, when we're talking to our constituent groups, constituent groups, to make sure that our message is consistent. And when you talk about Eve, about saying it's additional information, the clarity of that information and how we communicate it really. And so when I look at all these 600 emails that I can't answer, and everybody's saying, when you're in the red and why aren't you doing this? That, the, the information is concise and clear as it can be coming from the board must also be unified in that. And so I really am encouraging us to be consistent in how we message our community and help me answer those emails. I see a couple of people have done that, but thank you. Okay, so we could move on. Superintendent, refer on enrollment.
Yeah. The, 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 the,[1803.12]
Who left?
Yeah.
No, we have that.
So I'd love, yeah, I'd love to see, so if we had like, let's say, 900 growth. So then really, it would be like 3,000 probably left. Then I'd love to see that 3,000 broken up, same demographics. I mean, did we lose a certain demographic over another? Did they go to charter versus private? I think that would be very good. And then my last comment is, once we then figure that out, I, I would love us to do an engagement plan with those families and just say, but people made lots of decisions for lots of reasons. We understand that. We would like you to stay engaged with us. And we hope at some point you will come back. But I think just acknowledge that, because I have heard people say, well, you know, back, when things get back to normal, we're coming back. So I think the more we can engage with them and not be like, well, goodbye, good riddance. It's really, we understand there's lots of hard choices, but we are still here. Family, I would love to see an engagement plan like this.
Pam?
Thank you. Dr. Dr. But I'm giving you off. Thank you for the information. I have a question. When we talk about engaged, what does engagement look like? Is that logging in once a day, logging in once a week? Is it turning in other assignments? What does engagement mean?
So we take a look at attendance over the course of a week at a time. We are obligated to take attendance every single day. And so that looks like either synchronous, asynchronous, or parallel. And so teachers have the opportunity to take attendance by 10:00 AM on Monday for the preceding week because we give students the opportunity each day to complete their work by 11:59 PM. And so, and their packets are accordingly completed enough. So as a result, Friday's attendance doesn't get captured till midnight. So they have until 10:00 AM on Monday to be able to.
So that's the work completion?
Yes. Well, it's not completion.
I just log in.
So completion is Miss Amont's work. My group is out. Yeah.
And then the second question I have, when you say that the social workers and whomever else have made so many contacts, what does contacts mean? Does that mean boots on the ground, we're going to find these kids, we're beating the bush? Okay.
Well, so there's a variety of ways. So teachers have, teachers first make three initial contacts. If they haven't been able to reach a student three times, then that elevates to the school. Once it gets to the social worker, then those can include home visits, and not just by the, the school social worker. Principals out knocking on doors, going to apartment complexes, security staff, many, many, many people across the organization who have boots on the ground to make sure that we are engaging with our students.
And so the 106, thank you for that, because that, I'm. So I'm always one of those.
Yes.
But nevertheless, the 106, we know they have connectivity. Do we know why they have not all been?
No, Jeremy and I, I don't think we know. No. Okay, I didn't want to misrepresent. So we've talked about that a lot because we got them up to that step. And in some cases, we just don't know. We have lots of anecdotal kind of stories of people who've actually been in both homes and apartments from the CPS side helping with that, but we're anxious to see those students.
Thank you. We'll just pull around, pull around then.
Yeah, I think just a couple of thank yous. I really appreciated the presentation and the rigor of the demographics. I appreciate it at times. We even had a time that was great. Ryan, I think your question about the like 2,000 withdrawals, I was gonna add that, thank you. Pam, I think the question of what does need, I think, I think I said two questions. With, I do think this, the 2,000 Ryan was talking about, to me, it feels like an important figure in addition to 539. Are we able to break that apart into what shares versus what shares? Just like what's behind my question is, I'm trying to find how much of this is parents who decided they wanted something other than CPS, child, and his school is just a different sport. That's one, I'm not saying we shouldn't care about that, that that's just one kind of issue. The thing I'm also worried about is children who are on campus. And so like, we're in school last year, and we just don't know where they are. And I can't tell if that is a very small number of children or a huge number of thousands of children. And so I'm trying to, that's, that's one of the key things.
We can get that information. I'll channel it right off the top.
To add a little bit for your, your first question regarding the 2,000 withdrawal numbers versus contact numbers? The withdrawals or the no-show numbers?
Yeah, I'm trying, well, how much is no-show versus how much is?
The no-shows are not included in those withdrawals. No-shows at this point have not actively been withdrawn from the enrollment of the district. So they are in no-show. Those withdrawals are only, that number represents the official submission of a withdrawal from the district. So they're, they're separate. The withdrawal does not include any no-show.
So then that would mean that like this 34,900, that those are people who, the only people who have been subtracted out are people who came to us and said, we no longer like to be in CPS, we're gonna send their child.
It does include, that number includes the no-shows being removed from the enrollment.
Okay, so then, yeah, so what?
A total is included.
I understand what you're asking.
So the, the, correct, okay. So I appreciate that. And then I think my other one was on, on contact. Is there, is there a way to, this doesn't have to be perfect, I'm just trying to get across to people for this, but you can imagine lots of different ways to try to contact. People mentioned things like phone calls, home visits. If you think of a pie chart of like all the different things that we've tried, can you paint a picture of like, you know, 80% phone calls and 20% home visits? Is it 50/50? Is this all robo calls and free home visits? Like what's the distribution?
So the challenge in all transparency, I think, yes, we could get that for you, but we're pulling from behind laws. So teachers and school social workers are actually entering narratives into power school. So it would, yes, we could get that for you.
So it's, it's, it may not be important, like I don't want to create, I think what's behind my question, I think there's, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say everything that's in my head without any description of judgment. It could be crushing this, you know, I just, I don't know yet. But I think there's a difference between a robo call and a home.
So I can say that calls have not been robo calls. Those don't represent robo. So the 41,000 number is actual me calling to a home.
That's a huge number. That's really impressive.
It is huge. And so those do not include robo. I think the challenge, and we can't pull that data for you, it's just that they're in narrative law. So the way that we capture the data around, we can pull some of it very, very easily. Jeremy has been a guru in helping us try and find a lot of it. It's just, it's, it's just the way that we.
Sure, it just be clear for my people, I, I'm not asking anybody to collect more data. I think it's not a great data here. I think it's what I was trying to test for is like, are we being as creative as we can?
Sure.
Trying to hit her with the second. That's fine.
I see other ideas that we haven't tried to use.
Yeah.
And I will say that we did get pushback from at least one unit employee out of home. And if you do not value and respect us as employees, if you're having us go to home during COVID. I, I could see that.
Yeah.
Okay, E.
What was, I appreciate this a lot, this is great. And I'm interested in what Ryan was suggesting that the new university departures and what have you. What was the enrollment? Not the projected enrollment for this year, but what was the actual enrollment last year?
Yeah, I don't, I don't honestly remember where we were. I should have had that number anticipated. Jeremy is.
Do you remember?
Jeremy is looking at our plan, it was 36,300.
This sounds great.
36,000. So we anticipated having 600 initial.
Sorry. And, and, and we have the 34,973. So I think that's kind of more interesting to me. I wanted to know if, how do you all interpret this data? You, you've shared it with us, what do you think it might mean? And it doesn't have to be your final analysis, but from the standpoint of you have done all this research, critical for a number of reasons. What are you seeing? What are you seeing about which schools might be under-enrolled? Which ones might be over-enrolled? Are there conclusions that can be made? And I like that you disaggregated like, you know, gender and background and what have you. What are you, what are you thinking as an administrator?
Yeah, so one piece that I did not share in the presentation, in conversation with your folks, our preschool population has changed. And so I do think that we will get those youngsters back, but we're about 523 difference than where we were expecting to be. So 523 out of that 1946, the difference between projected and actual represent our, some of our preschool. And, and so she is well aware of that. And, and some of it, we, we recognize that our earliest learners, and we're being very cautious. And so we do hope and are respecting any of.
I'm trying to interpret.
I just wanted to react to that. That was a good question. What, what's the interpretation of the data? Because I was sitting here thinking, I think I was expecting devastating news that we had lost all these kids. Now, don't get me wrong, that we've lost enough, we've lost too many, and we want those kids back. But, but the data doesn't say, for example, that, that, you know, that we've lost thousands and thousands of kids. So, so for me, that's what this tells us, which is hopeful for me because I think that this engagement plan, or whatever we can do to draw those kids back. And I do believe, I happen to believe that kids will come back to school. You know, so, yeah. I appreciated that.
Yeah, I think we looked at it as a funnel. So first, and as a story, so first, where are we? Then what have we done to be able to mitigate this? So this is where we are. This is what we've done in terms of our communication from our teachers and our credible school staff to try and locate students and get them engaged, to help them with technology, to link them into services. And now it is, to Mr. Messer's point and Ms. Bolton's point, it's the now, what is the, what are those next steps around not only engagement for our youngsters who we are so excited to see on Tuesday, and then the next group on Thursday, but for those families who may have made an alternate choice during this trip. So I think those are those very concrete next steps in terms of how do we put our arms around families and students to be able to support them.
Can I ask, can I finish the question? Okay, this is a little bit in weeds. Don't want an elaborate response. Because, you know, we all hear stories from parents and things about how things are going. But I'm curious to know, if, if there is a situation, trying to figure out how this is COVID, if you have a youngster who logs on, family logs on, but they're not engaged, they're not turning in work, they're just there jumping around, watching whatever, playing with the dog or whatever. How is that COVID?
So this is, we've had this conversation on train, to Miss Amont, she isn't there. We've had this conversation a lot because it is very similar to classroom instruction. For a learner who may come in, put his head down on the desk and go to sleep, or a learner who doesn't turn an assignment in a classroom, or a learner who, for whatever reason, is not. That student is counted as attending in that classroom because he is physically present in that classroom. Where the next step is, in terms of the learning aspect, am I doing my work? Am I completing my work? Am I participating? That becomes the teaching and learning. So that's how those two pieces are pulled apart. So for attendance, if you are there, we are currently present, just as we would do with learning. The teaching and learning piece of that is where those two pieces lie.
They have to be engaged differently.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, definitely so.
Do you have the data on homeschoolers? The number that have applied for homeschooling this year compared to last year in New York?
Yes, I do, but I don't have it with me, but I do. We did look into that. It has increased, I think, by 200 students, but I don't, I will confirm that. I guess.
I could just add a little bit more to the question that our member Bolton asked. So what we can gather from this data is that obviously, distance learning isn't working for 100% of our kids. I will say though, that traditional face-to-face didn't work 400% for our kids either. The next piece of data we're going to look into is the students who we have not been able to reach a specific child. Did that child have attended problems, issues last year? Because this may not be as a result of COVID, or maybe as a result of COVID. Also note that we have to continue to work with our parents by engaging with the school and engaging with their teachers about the work. Because we know that we have 106 kids who took the device, who have the Wi-Fi access set up. The teachers have given them the materials to do the work at home, and yet still they have not engaged with us. And so it's really about the partnership between the school and the parent, but it's definitely too exciting. So we can provide all the resources, but we have to assist our parents in engaging with.
What's our, and I've had teachers say this too, about the same number of kids, are, you know, whether they're live like last year or we're online, it's, and the games and pieces. This is a reality. What's our average, like for last year or over three years? What's our average attendance rate anyway?
90% across the district. So different schools are in different places.
Right, oh, yeah. But across, so that's really not that much from what we have here.
Let's want to just track down the kids we haven't seen.
Yeah, does that, does that work?
Here's the denominator.
That's my handy theory. Yeah.
Thought this was extremely helpful. Other questions, comments?
Just thank you.
Very before, look forward to hearing what's going on in two weeks. Yeah. Okay. Next item, budget implications.
Well, so I think I may have misunderstood the plan of the conversation because I thought it was gonna be about growth plans. And I just wanted to have a conversation about, if we can tax the budget when we make those decisions. But I'm planning to do a budget update on October 9th, your public.
Okay.
We got that done quickly.
Yeah. We might actually get out of here in a little while. Okay, so the third item on the agenda is one. This is of course, the board work, the board regarding our strategic plan measure. If you look in your strategic plan on page 14, under the strategic measures, we're sitting there under item measure 3D, one, one statement regarding our measure. Thought that this might be a good opportunity for us to talk a little bit about how we, what measures we want to establish for ourselves, and how it gets recorded as an overall plan. And, and this, this came to light when Ms. Tremble Oliver made the very first presentation on the results that have been inputted at that time when we were having the meeting over at Killboard. I believe it was Killboard. And it just dawned on me that we did not address our part of it. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, open it up for conversation, get us started. We may or may not finish it today, but just to open it up to get us started and get our thoughts going about how we measure for this.
Which one are we thinking?
3D, the more wholesome responsibility for open and inclusive well as community engagement process. Now I can tell you, you laugh, I'd be curious to know why you're laughing. But. But, um, well, this is an unusual year, so I can just say the least. And I have no doubt that if we develop measures right now, we probably need them very quickly in terms of how and the numbers and all that. But I guess my question is, is, you know, how do we even measure your effectiveness as a board? Do you measure that in numbers of contacts? I mean, what, you know, that's the kind of conversation that we need to have in terms of what we want to do. Now, I will say, a lot of this ties to, if you look at Phyllis's performance evaluation, some of the broad-spoke areas are things that we do, she does on our behalf, like collecting information for the community concern log and creating calendars and things like that. But I think for us, it has to be a little deeper than that, maybe, in terms of are we reaching out in the community, for example, to community councils and things? And I know everybody has their own calendar, their own engagement days and all that. Do we want to consider that? And if so, how will we report that? But anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Ben and then Melanie.
I'm ready.
Um, I don't know the right answer, I just had a couple of ideas. Uh, you know, I think, um, I would love to see us over the medium term do more around parent surveys that are built in such a way that we can test for whatever not getting represented. And this came up a couple of times in some of the public change surveys that we did over the course of the summer and fall. And I imagine, like, if we were able to get cost-effective platforms where, say, two or three times a year, we could survey either all parents or their representative sample of parents. And I think we could ask a major question. You know, one of them may be about, like, their opinions about the extent to which the school is open. You know, and then actually, we were to set a goal around that. Like, you know, if I had a magic wand, like, give it once, you get a sense of a flower-based kindness. And we decided, yeah, or, it's just more six months, nine months, or twelve months later. Um, seven.
Well, my concern is, when we do have our open and inclusive meetings, we're only hearing from families of, from six or seven schools. And I know, I think it was Mike that mentioned it, that our laptops don't.
Yeah.
Don't have access to BlueJeans app. And I would think that we would be able to not only have it able to be accessed, but we can have it, like, for us, have it, all they have to do is push a couple buttons and they're in, like the kids do. And that way, our, all of our families will at least have quick and easy access to our board meetings and want to get in. Because right now, I mean, we're hearing from Paul, Clark, Danz. Yeah, that's, you know, that's about six or seven schools, and that's it. And, you know, there's got to be an easier way for people to connect with us. And that seems to be the easy way, because to me, Jeremy, this would be, I would see you calling over. But, you know, they have the devices in their homes, so let's make it easy.
Okay, Pam and then Ryan.
Yeah, this. I'm struggling a little bit with our population being majority African-Americans. I never hear from my neighborhood schools mostly, and I don't know what to do with that. Um, I don't know how to, I mean, I asked a question about what, you know, the percentage of surveys are we giving back? How are we communicating with our families? Whether we create ways of reaching out to them? But I was told from a community person who's very involved in our community that certain people in our community or community schools don't really trust us. And that meant something to me, that we have our high-scale parents. We talk about the ones that are really involved. We have other schools that are always commenting, they're following parents from those schools. They're always on our engagement. But our neighborhood schools are never represented at these, at the table. So I'm thinking, do we do different things to engage them? How do we engage our majority of our district? Because we're not engaging them. And engagement is different from being able to participate in a board meeting. They're being present. Engagement means that we are sharing information, we're communicating, we're hearing from them. And I don't know why we're missing that number, and that's the majority of our school. But we're not hearing from the majority of our schools.
Ryan and then Mike.
Yeah, I love this question. I think it's a little different, um, appendant. You know, but we talked about putting together, like, a stump speech, um, board engagement deck at one point, that we could take out to community organizations. And I would love to see us, um, a development comprehensive list of partner groups. Um, because as I've done several of these levy presentations, which includes kind of an update, almost without question, they say, gosh, this is so good, I wish we could get this more often. Um, so A, we got to talk to people at some levy. And I think having the kind of stuff we prepare for a levy speech, do it in the off-levy years, but be very deliberate. Maybe each of us takes an organization a month. Think how many we could get across of very diverse groups. And then we would each come back and share, maybe, here's what I got this week from my groups. Here's the answer to the top three questions. Um, and I think it would help us all get a better perspective. And then I would love to see, at least once a year, kind of the point on the same schools. I mean, and we have the same people. I mean, like, the one that stuck in my head, I don't know how many meetings in a row we've been called disgusting, said like that, and it's the same person, but it still hurts every time, you know? It's just. Yeah, hardwares. But the point is, um, I wonder if we could get together and just have a board with our LSDMCs to engage in kind of a, like, council of nations, but having all of our LSDMCs and almost like work it, or we could do listening sessions. We did that one time or something, where we would have a group at this table and a group at this table. So A, this school's hearing what the challenges are for this school. So we're cross-pollinating, because I think people get in their bubble. Um, they think their kids all look like the kids where their kids go to school. And so A, I think that's good. But then having us peppered around, like, I think we would get some very valuable information. So kind of a three-pronged approach.
Okay, I think, and I wanted to comment, and I want to acknowledge Mike too. Um, one of the things that I hear you say, and this is good conversation to have, but and I want, I think the goal is to identify what the board specifically itself can do. Not saying, well, we need this because it's an assignment that we have to give to administration to do. Not that it's not important, but the very concrete examples about what are the various strategies and mechanisms that we can do as a board? Like connections in the community and whatever, you know, the council, or even how do we use fact-finding with our community? I mean, things like that are things that we can measure as board work, or what we're doing to engagement. So I appreciate hearing that. Um, I was going to say something else about that. Um, oh, I'll just say this, be very transparent about it. In all this pandemic, what offended me the most, my feelings were hurt, is that I was told that I wasn't doing enough with the Black community. And I was, I was hurt by that. And so in my mind, I'm constantly saying, this board, and, you know, you all know, it's different. We have to engage the communities of color sometimes in a different way. And, you know, in the communities of color, in the African-American communities, the relationship piece is key. You build a relationship and they'll open their doors to you. But physically, we couldn't do that this year because of COVID. But I'm saying, though, those are, that's kind of an example of, you know, well, what can I do more as a Black board member to open up dialogue, you know, and ease down the box a little bit? So that's my piece. And, uh, did you want to follow up before?
Yeah, oh, I forgot the one, this, no. It came up yesterday in one of the committee meetings. Um, and it just made me think, like, uh, sometimes I think that we have resources in the community that people tap into enough. Um, and, you know, the question that somebody was hearing in the public was, that sack the woman taught?
Is that as email?
Yeah. So, and not specifically her, about her, but what she said was, there's a whole lot of us who have some expertise. And how can we engage to help? Because she's got her doctorate and this, that, and the other, and it could be some resources. But kind of like we have for the audit committee, we have people that come in and advise. It's a very powerful group. They've got tons and tons of experience. But are there people that we can engage, not just saying, well, come and speak for your two minutes? But how can we actually figure out how to identify some of these, uh, community partners where the board can engage to bring resources to the district? And I think, A, there's one thing that's about going and educating and keeping people abreast. But then how can we go recruit? Like, a board member sitting down with some of our corporate community, let's say. It could be huge assets to help some of our most vulnerable schools. And I think if some of us went out and championed them, bring them in, it could really, I think, bring some significant, uh, resources, um, to the district.
Okay, Mike?
I want to be quick, because Pam and Ryan kind of together brought up a lot of the issues I wanted to bring up. I want to start highlighting Ryan's piece about going, talked about that a few times. We've done it with very specific things, like our last levy where we all kind of divvied up the community councils or whatever. Uh, when Laura Worley was here and we had her. Which I think seemed to work. I would just say a couple of things that, again, payback off the posts of what was already said. But to Pam's point, there is a distrust. Um, and I think that the conversation needs to be more about, why do majority of our population, Black families, feel that it cannot be heard by us? Not that they have any to be heard because we give out devices, we stream our meetings, but it's the issue of feeling like you cannot or will not be heard, which is a deeper issue. And I think we're having that conversation, which is awesome and bold, I think, of this group. So, you know, and to tie back to Ryan, I think that issue of going to people is the key. And we did it with FCC when we contracted with a couple of those community groups, community organizing groups, that were two people. I think that was good and learning, taking like the, I've only been here three years, but in those three years, a lot's happened. And taking sort of like the greatest hits of what we learned in these big macro things that have happened and applying them now so that people feel they can be heard. I think that's the last side. How can we get people to come to our meetings? But why do people feel like they cannot be heard or they don't trust us? Um, I mean, lastly, and I know this costs money, so it's not Pollyanna, I've said that, but these BlueJeans streaming, I think, have been great as far as access. You know, and when things get back to people can come to our meetings again. I really like, if it's cost-effective, to consider, like, what would that look like to people? So that they can plug in.
Eve?
Yeah, several things. Um, I think open and inclusive. I think we do that. And then people complain about the fact that our meetings are too long or that it looks like we're indecisive or whatever. But, I mean, we make the sausage out in public. And so those are open meetings. Um, and inclusiveness, I think that the COVID piece has, is, gives us a false sense of us being inclusive because we've got thousands of people watching and listening because we're in crisis. When I was on a little city council, we used to say, hey, it's great, nobody showed up. Because if somebody shows up in great, great numbers, it means something is wrong. So part of that, you have to carry that. So it's really the engagement piece that really is the crucial thing, you know? And to Ryan's point about, uh, LSDMCs. Our LSDMCs meet four times a year as one big giant group. It's like a congress of LSDMCs. And superintendent's doing a great job of kind of revamping it, making it more real and what have you. So that's been good. So one of the things board members can do is go to those meetings. Because those meetings are listening meetings where the schools are sharing ideas back and forth. It's cool stuff and it's on the calendar. And I would, you know, I'd try to make one or two as a suggestion. And I think the other thing is, I think this particular item that we added here in the strategic plan, I think it was born of the FCC piece. Because we knew that that was a success and that we did something right there.
Yes.
No matter the abuse, no matter the divisiveness or whatever. Uh, I think that that is our, is our model. And I'm, I don't know how we now lead, but I think we have to, to a certain extent, be, 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 yeah, participating in a distant way. I think we have to, as much as that's been great and awesome and also sad sometimes, there is, there is a need for us eventually to go back to, if you have something, come and speak to us and be with us and sit there in meetings or whatever.
We're going to talk about that in the next step.
But I think that's one of the things that we can think about.
Yes.
Is how we segue out of where we are right now. And to keep some of it or whatever, we'll talk about later. But go to the LSDMC district-wide meetings, they are very informative. Uh, and also be thinking in terms of FCC funnel. And I will say this, and this will sound like I'm criticizing all of us, including myself. Um, we, not in this last protocol writing, but in the previous one, where we said we were going to get rid of the Committee on Public Engagement, we should have. That was, that became a very big mess. But we said we were going to build in more community participation in our committees. We did that, and we, maybe we went too far. What do you expect? We got Maraskio on one of these committees and meetings. We spend money and it'll let me hear from him. But my point is, I think we need to make it a concerted effort to continue to involve the community in the committee meetings. There's more trust in those committee meetings than there is in the bigger group and more stuff. So those are, those are three or four things that say, yes, board members, we could do.
I'll create examples.
That's super quick. Um, that reminded me, and we had talked about this too, and along the same lines of our full board meetings, and yet maybe now things are so unique, but in our full board meetings, looking at our presentations and maybe, I don't know, it's a standing item of a community presentation or something. So it's not just Rachel telling us something, it's community maybe telling us something as well. So that doesn't happen. I think that's another way we could, like, what was it?
Uh, help me say it again, I'm trying to understand.
If you have a standing presentation, so you have a couple of presentations of board meeting. We usually have multiple, two or three, right? One of them is a community presentation, it could be one of the groups Ryan referenced. It could be the LSDC, really, hey, I want to come brag about this. Um, that's all.
Okay. I think all of these are great ideas. I think for us, it's putting together sort of a list or summary of what we talked about, revisiting it and divvying up the work in terms of assignments, in terms of how we approach it, coming up with recommendations for how we approach it. Um, these are all great ideas, all of them. So I, and I think it is doable that we could do something that feels much more effective for us as a board. Um, I did want to also, the superintendent, I meant to say this earlier when I'm speaking. You know, when we were planning and strategizing around how to get the message out to the community and this board clearly talked to the superintendent about getting out of, doing the town halls and making sure we touch the communities of color. Um, one of the things, and I have to say this, we use urban radio, which we had not historically done. Um, and I think that there are more sort of hidden venues within the communities of color that we can find out where they are and engage. And it really is grassroots stuff that we have to get involved with. And one of the things that I heard, some of the feedback that I heard from people who listened to the superintendent. I was on one of the first radio shows a while ago. And it wasn't really me that they wanted to hear from. Because, you know, we, we, you know, we talk about board work in a different way. But the nuts and bolts of things, or what happens in this district, they really wanted to hear from the board. And I received lots of very positive feedback from that. And so I think it's very important to identify in the communities of color and some of our more impoverished area, I can think of a couple of places like in Price Hill, real grassroots organizations that we have to connect with. So I'm saying that just to say thank you, superintendent, for doing that. But more in putting it on our list as some of our non-traditional kinds of networks that we need to have.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and the more of this we do, I think it's going to continue to drive more email communication, phone calls. And, you know, I think that there may be an opportunity to do some constituent-type training for our board staff and put them a little bit more of an active role versus passing it to us. Like if you contact David Mann's office, he's got a staffer who is like, let me get in touch with you, let me hear, and then I'll summarize it and get it to the person.
Can I comment on that real quick? We, before you came in executive session, we did have some discussion about ways to improve the performance reviews for our staff. And that might fit very well into that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there are a couple that I know, people who've done that job here.
Yeah.
For elected officials. And, you know, we all have lives outside of this. And having somebody really trained with somebody who's, you know, worked for various people. Here's how you, that comes in, you can give them an immediate response. Understand and then get connected and you're following up. Because, you know, I've heard lots of people like, well, I've engaged and I've heard anything back. And I saw some things on social media, I'm like, in the volume. And I think having some support from our board staff in helping to speed that up and take a little bit more home.
Well, I think, just to follow up on that, I think our staff do that to some extent. And I think they're very open to really tightening that up so that that relationship to the community is very different and they can do some of the things that you're talking about. But we have to let them know. We have to let them know the help and trying to get them trained.
Oh, yeah. I don't think that they're doing anything wrong.
Yeah, I know, very.
I'm training it, maybe some additional.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, I do think that we, and this has been an extraordinary year. But I do think it would be a good thing for us to have, maybe not our two folks alone, but it would be great if we had actual, more real in-time responses to the people that are reaching out to us. And that's a huge job. And it's an impossible job right now, but it's a huge job. But it can't fault the two women that are in our office. But I do think we should do much better at response. And I do think we have to investigate when people do come or kind of review or research a little bit. When people come to speak to us and they get their couple of minutes or the three minutes or whatever. I think it's weird, and I'm not saying we have to change it, but it is a bad image, a bad visual that we sit there and don't respond. I don't think we should, but I do think there should be more time for anybody in the administration could respond. Like or when indeed the superintendent says, so-and-so, I'd like you to have a meeting here with our assistant superintendent. That, I think we need to do more of that.
That's in the third segment.
I'm skipping ahead because you said we might be running.
Well, we got plenty of time. We got plenty of time that I just wanted to share with you.
I hear you. Time is good. And then also more of back and forth, not in an arguments, but responsive.
And dialogue.
Yeah.
Ben?
I was just going to ask for a discussion holistically. About what the steps are.
Well, we generated lots of ideas. I think it would be great, and I don't mind doing this, is summarizing the ideas. I think we have to keep it at the forefront of our board discussions. So, you know, once we get a summary, we might be able to go back in and like a board matters meeting, as a board matters subject, and look at it, narrow it, make it a little more concise, make some assignments where appropriate, and then do more. Thank you.
And I think I'd be volunteer, take the list. And I don't know if this is allowed, but kind of doing almost like an interview with each of the members to try to get a plan.
You don't even have to explain this. It's yours. I'm going to give you this. You can do it.
I think, you know, really having a discussion about, hey, what about this, what about this? And then kind of presenting a summary.
If everybody's great with that, that sounds good. It sounds like a plan. Wonderful. All right. Anything else on this, this particular area? Okay, so we move into the board development piece. Actually, we hit on a lot of this. So if you look at some of the categories under the subjects under this particular area, you know, discussion about board governors' roles, expectations, board meetings, board communication, board assignments, and internal operating, we touched on a lot of this. The intent of this was basically for us to begin to talk, which we had. You know, this has been an unusual year. And as, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to reflect on lessons learned, how we as a board unit could improve. We have lots of suggestions around that already. To open up for questions around our roles, our expectations of one another, if we could do anything different in terms of our process. And some of that, I will say, yes. Particularly as it relates to our board. So if I could, I'm definitely, we want to open it up, but if I could start with board meetings. Some of the concrete things are, which I am hearing, is about how we improve our engagement with the community in our public hearing. And right now, we have, I'm thinking like the timeframe, the two minutes versus the three minutes. Bylaws say three minutes. And we've been flexible because we've had so many people coming that we decided two minutes. It was a very straightforward two minutes and then people cut off. My question is, do we want to continue to, do we want to continue temporarily with the two-minute deal? Do we want to change that? Board members have ideas about how it might seem that different. That's my question.
Clarified question. In our bylaws that it says, um, we're going to talk about the same topic.
Yes.
What is the maximum?
I think it's five.
That's okay.
It's five. But if you think about this, yes. We, and we, it's, we relaxed the criteria. And we did that in FCC. I believe we allow everybody to, and I think if we had not done that, we probably caught more of it. So, you know, but yes, that's, yeah, it's fine to stop. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's totally fine. And I think also out of respect for the people who are tuning into our meetings. And I think that for the community, like, I want to put it through a lot of, for us, you know. So, you know, it's not just that. But one thing that I have to say, I think you cannot speak at council without giving your name. Right? And so if somebody that calls in and their camera's going, and they say their name is Jay, period, that's, that's not, that's somebody hiding and whatever. I think if we're sitting there, I just believe people, it should be who they are. It shouldn't create this mass unknown that in fact somebody's like, you know, that person had three, talked three times. I'm like, what? Really? And then, you know, and so remember I had to leave the last meeting, I'm listening to public comment. I heard two, that person spoke twice. One of them. It was, one was an initial, and when I'm listening, because I'm just listening, I wasn't watching anything, it was the exact voice. And I got a text and said, see, maybe she is a good candidate. So anyway, I think the point is, I would love to be, I'm still open for engagement. I just need, A, I prefer to see who it is. The police have their cameras on, because we are. And that's what Blue Jeans is about. That's engagement. And then B, you just need to have her name. That's it.
All right. So just a quick response. When we have meetings in-house, they fill out the paper that says their name, their title, they put their address, they put their contact information. And all of that goes back to our staff if there's follow-up need. So it does have, you know, and it's been different here because we don't get, we don't collect all that information.
That seems great because.
Okay. Well, we'll, okay, go ahead. I didn't, but you're saying. Okay, go ahead. But it's a feedback off of this. But when your question is, should we handle it? How we operate? If we're operating in person and we are able to streamline, cite subjects, and then, you know, this five on this, we can't do that on a platform like Zoom. I think we'll streamline what people are talking about before they speak. And then if we're talking about for the rest of the year, I think it's intentional. We'll go back to the person, which I know is not our agenda, but I'm saying it's intentional on that question. Well, what I'm going to say is, this whole situation with pandemic has been different. And we had to adjust for that. And so the question at hand is, you know, was, given the numbers of people who are speaking, do we want to continue with the two minutes versus the three minutes? Uh, you know, is that where you were?
Well, that, and then I heard somebody kind of fight comment that having this group of people speaking on the same topic got no way for us to go back on Zoom until they start speaking.
We kind of.
Well, what I'm saying is that when you limit it to five, people are talking about that. The first five people, then you cut off everybody else.
No, we're, I wouldn't.
Okay.
I think there's some confusion. The rule of the bylaws is if five go on, if I go, I'm done.
Limit the amount of time that's hard.
Okay. You can limit the amount of time, you're limited the number of people. Five people, this people, one topic. It's in the bylaws. I don't go off the top of my head.
So to clarify, if they are on Zoom and it's five people, they just all talk on the same topic, how do you?
Right now, I think what we're saying is, because we're in a different situation with pandemic, the flexibility of being able to allow everybody to speak, we weigh that criteria. So everybody gets to speak right now. Now, we did have a situation on Blue Jeans earlier with this group from the Green. The outdoor people, they were five people who spoke and he leveled his group.
And so January was one with our acting center, first, I possibly something different.
It might. And the question, we probably should have asked this question first, is, what is our status about continuing with Blue Jeans? That might help us some, but this is a.
Yeah, I was just going to, to Pam's point, two different rules to certain extent on the person versus the internet or, you know, online. However, to the degree that we could, whatever we demand in the in-person or request in the in-person, name, address, and signing the topic. I think that's what we have to do on the internet.
Oh, so is that, that's what we're saying?
Yeah.
That's the question. Yeah, okay.
And then I do think we need to be touchable responses to everybody that's speaking. If their questions are asked or whatever, if there's some sort of response, not by us, but maybe it rises to the administration.
Well, I would like to suggest, well, the superintendent keep obvious numbers.
And we could tell people that.
And, and, but what I was going to ask is, maybe, maybe after the hearing of the public, if we can go to the superintendent and ask her, to give her the opportunity or just ask her the opportunity to respond. And then she'll, I think she'll know which questions are responded. But hearing of a public has never been set up as a human event. So that would be a different, I agree that.
I agree with you on that. But I do have a response.
Yes, I got you.
But you know, in committee meetings, because we're in a pandemic, it is engagement. When people come to a committee meeting and the press, there is an engagement. And which is a little bit different than kind of how we, I guess we've been doing it over the, the Blue Jeans has not been engagement. It's that you. So is that some of the shifts remain engagement at committees? I put on the agenda of this committee meeting, agenda. And it's just for them to speak as if they do come. It hasn't been engaged.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's saying that committee is.
Okay, so that, I've been going the same way as board meetings over the past year. Okay.
Okay.
Melanie and Ben?
Right. Well, I agree with Brian that people have to identify themselves. First name, last name, relationship to the district, and if they have a school that they're, or that they're part of. Because we should be doing something with the numbers and the kinds of comments. For instance, emails in particular, not so much on hearing the public. I'm seeing some emails from teachers at particular schools. And I'm thinking, at first I thought, well, this is insubordination because of, you know, the superintendent sent out a notice that there are, there's a protocol they should follow. But then someone pointed out to me, well, maybe they're not being encouraged through that protocol. And if we're hearing from certain individuals, but a lot from a particular area of school, then there's a problem at that area of school. So not only should people identify themselves because, you know, they shouldn't hide behind anonymity, but so we can track where problem areas or problem administrators are, or problem buildings are, or community. You know, I think that would be really helpful, you know, to pinpoint what's going on that way.
This is a lie in a game.
Yeah, I think that, I wanted to say I agree with a lot of the, I have a mind of mine. But it's more.
Something that I need to.
Yeah. So maybe there's somebody out there who's doing something with the public. And so I'm just looking on my phone. What we do is like, find somebody, learn what they do. Right? Okay, two things. I think if that's helpful.
I would say go forward, but all jokes aside, and I've talked to many people on this, we have a model. We do. We have a model. It is not perfect, but some of what I hear doesn't even come close to doing what we do. But I would say, go ahead. I haven't talked to everybody across the country, so I don't know.
Can I ask what they, what they, like, was, was wrong? And it's not from a place of gratitude. I don't have the confidence.
Well, they, for example, well, what comes off the top of my head is, this is local. If somebody says, well, you know, they listen in and they say, well, we just like the way you all engage the public. They call it engagement. And they, number one, they don't have the numbers of people who are engaged. There are some districts that have no. Uh, there, there are some districts that have no hearing. People just don't come. So they're, they like the idea that we have to form every school meeting or campus, whatever, in and on itself. You know, um, what else have I heard? Uh, uh, time limits, somebody did mention, I was talking to somebody with a high school or a teacher who, um, was talking about response. So that's something that we, I think, can learn from. They, they were saying, well, you all answer questions. So, you know, those kinds of.
So yeah, I think that's one of the things that is, at least in the last several years, there are more than several years relationship in the board and the superintendent's place. And also invariably talk, people talk about professionalism, thousands of people in the administration that come to us to give reports. And we have a much higher quality, I think, of, of, um, the leadership team than I think a lot of school districts do and like that. But it's a, it's a professional relationship. We don't play gotcha with the administration. Even if we're kind of upset with them, we usually will be very diplomatic how we answer or ask first. They're like, okay. I mean, you know, we, we try to, that's, that makes another difference. Council has to make points by attacking the administration. We know we can't attack the administration, don't want to, but to have a, this more professional relationship and for the sake of the school district and the sake of the kids, so.
And just a comment on that is that I, I talked probably a month or so ago to a local department who said that they were very much impressed with that dynamic of board, the administration, that they felt like their superintendent, I'm not, I will name the district, but that their superintendent had built up a barrier about COVID planning. And so when I was sharing with them around the safety, the safeguard conscience and stuff, they were like, you are just, you're doing what? Our superintendent hasn't done that. I asked one board member how they were spending their care dollars. That I don't know. So, I mean, that, that number one, yeah. So any way that we can improve, I think is great, we're, we're open to it.
Listen, I, I, I think, I think it's all the comments of the public. My perspective, I'm older than you, definitely. Thank you. I, I would love trying to learn other, other things.
Absolutely.
I would apply it in a different place, in CPS than like the public comment board. That might just be because they all of a sudden, much more important. So I'm on a creative actual work, but I just appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, well, we, we, it's coming up with some really good concrete ideas, so if you, um, yes.
Yeah, I think speaking of the public, it kind of is what it is. I think it's, uh, area of your frustrations, very few times have some people really given us, you know, I mean, it just, it's not been like, anyway, it's, to me, that's a very different thing than public. That's just giving people an avenue to.
Right.
Now, second part though, kind of to Melanie's point, well, everybody knows that I, I lower employees. Now I'm all about employee engagement. Employee engagement does not happen in public comment. So I believe that we, I think that was such a good call. Um, A, it just doesn't look good to our public staff complaining to you when it's like, don't you have leadership that angles like my workplace and your workplace, whatever. Uh, but I will say, but, uh, if we didn't have something else going on, maybe I feel differently. But what I know is coming is our engagement work. And, you know, it used to be, we do these, uh, these, uh, kind of bitchin' moment, part kind of surveys. And once we did the employee engagement work, and it got rolled out by team, problems got addressed. Because that team, that leader got a score. And the question down there, you know, my opinions can't work in all that. If they score that low, we'll know exactly what they'll, so that's what I love about what's being rolled out, is we will have engagement for employees. And I think that is their opportunity for engagement. And then I think, you know, we should all be able to see those scores. And then more importantly, kind of what the impact means are if there are issues. Uh, but I think we have to keep very separate.
I heard. Yeah, um, Pam, this, uh, this, this one, this two, I thought. That one, in that other room over there? People were talking a while. Okay. And that was, um, that was because the, the crowd was.
Oh, how to.
But, you know, uh, and that's another question about in our board work sessions. And I think there's, I certainly have a different activity on that. Uh, like, like board work sessions are a little bit different. And this is all in my opinion. And, and folks who, I've been around for now, this is my fifth year, and folks will tell you that they probably know that I was saying it. I don't think that we need to have hearing of the public in every single meeting, especially in our work session.
And I, and I do the term hearing of the public. I did public engagement, that's different to me than hearing of the public. Okay, I think when I, when I was in this, at this work with.
Oh, you're talking, yeah.
And it was, it was an engagement, you know, we were talking about schools, but it was an engagement. It wasn't just people venting, it was like it was engaged in our conversation, like how good we're doing.
And it wasn't planned. We didn't plan.
No.
Well, we just opened it up because we didn't, there wasn't anyone there and we had to build it. Right. Um. Okay. So again, there are some real concrete ideas I'm gonna give to Ryan on that. So the merit is down there. Yeah. Um, going back to the question around, do we continue with Blue Jeans? Or how can we begin to think about transitioning back to meetings in the ILC when we're inviting people? Um, just want to open that up for your comments and questions and see if there's an impersonation. Is it? There, there was some, uh, communication around the cost. Blue Jeans is extraordinary, the cost is extraordinary, extraordinarily high, significant. And so the question that's being posed right now is, shall we continue with Blue Jeans? Or is this the appropriate time to start thinking about transitioning back to the ILC? We're bringing people in. And if so, that process will have to be worked out because we certainly can't have audience actively. So that's a, a huge concern.
What have they, is there a, uh, actually, no, this is my, is there a like public expectation around the size of gatherings? They're really, I clearly don't do any of these, but I'm just curious a little bit.
So, um, if you look at corporate in terms of taking younger people to reduce the distance. There, there is a specific background, like this, this is not having a room beyond the corporate footage. I mean, one thing we did talk about at, at the administration, is whatever means we can go back to the person, that we look at the corporate footage in the ILC and identify how many people could safely.
Sit in and mark the seats and have a, yeah. I mean, and I, from, from my perspective, I'm, I'm agnostic, but to that, right out of the seat, mark, gotta wear a mask, if that sounds great. Alternative way, there'd be cheaper alternative Blue Jeans that have the kind of security that, on a platform. I, I have also heard from folks that semi-simples. I guess you can always watch them.
And then later.
You can watch them.
So, how much of luck?
You know.
But you can't interact, you can't interact with it.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things. One is the suggestion to actually investigate in the ILC, but we, how many people can accommodate in there safely? That's one. Secondly, is there an alternative to Blue Jeans? One that would be cheaper or, I don't know.
Yeah, and I'll check.
Jeremy is saying that.
I don't know. I'm sure I'm wrong there. But I went good, just.
Yeah. Go ahead. So, I mean, I think this all triggered lots of interesting things. But hearing of the public is really them speaking for two minutes, or with, with no response. So one way to me is to say, rather than having this, for, you know, this, uh, speaking of the public here, here's the address, uh, speaking of the public at CPS, blah, blah, blah. And you just submit it. And we can even have a form, where they type, like you go to a link, just quick and easy, because I get a lot, like, I don't even have a contact info. So if we had like CPS board input at whatever, they go to that link, name, da, 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 whatever. They could drop down the category, and we could get all the feedback by category. And we could get reports. And so you would, it's no different than them doing it because we're not responding.
We, we're not, let me clear, let me clarify. Good idea. But what we're talking about is the cost for the number of people that even to me.
But that's what I'm saying. The only reason of using Blue Jeans is so we can do hearing of the public, because we can stream it cheap, a lot cheaper. So instead of having them be able to speak live, you can still, here's a way to get public comment, you just go this quick link, and we just say it at every meeting. But then once a month, we could pull a report and all the comments on this, and we have it. And then we could have, then what's the response? So that's one thing. And then the, uh, other was, I, I've been in, uh, Withrose Auditorium. Uh, but I haven't been at Walnut Hills.
For you.
Uh, but I'm wondering, just thinking about how big Withrose was, we had a meeting there, and then you did it just like they're doing for the Taft when they're opening for the children's theater, they're, it's like tape here, tape here. Actually giving quite a few in the Taft. But if we approached, you know, impersonations that way, using one of our auditoriums, we would be definitely, uh, able to connect with more people than we guys.
Are, are those, are these halls bigger than the ILC?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Withrose is, sure.
Um, Steve and then Mike.
I, um, I think we're suffering from, it's not post-traumatic stress yet, but it's pretty, or current.
In that sound.
Yeah, everything is, everything that we're saying is changing. Everything, uh, that we're saying is being influenced by the COVID. And, um, I don't want tech folks and IT folks and logistics folks to have to now set up all kinds of stuff someplace else, have to spend money and time and whatever. Uh, if we need more space, we can use some of this space, and it can be closer to whatever. Um, I was, to Ryan's point though, about people can, you know, just type in what they want to say, and I think that's great. But it has to be their choice, because if they want to do it live and actually appear, they should be able to. Just the way the community will interpret that is we got set up with this and that. And that we found a way for it not to happen. So it would have to be a choice to do the entry or actually speaking, or we'll get, we get, properly criticized or criticized for trying to avoid the same approach.
And I don't, I don't think that's gonna be free. I think that would be, if we offered more options. So I, I, I would hope that we would try to keep simple as possible. We either stay with Blue Jeans or we come back to ILC, that's not simple, that I would think. But.
That changes my comment. So the choices as mine, Eric, that's come back to the ILC is bigger. I think we, I think. All right.
As a part of things.
That's amazing. Um, my two cents, and everyone knows we're going back to the funded option. We're going back, we're gonna tell. Regardless of how I feel about the former. So however we do that, I think.
So, what do you think?
Does that mean you're pretty clear if you're talking about having both at the same time, have, have both a layer?
No, I think we, I think, um, we, we should still find a way at post, but people can't, they already can't start meetings. But the nice thing about Blue Jeans was, or is, that people can also cause, like, for example, we do not need to be, to be streaming this. That's just no problem.
No problem.
Unless I'm missing some, unless I'm missing something, the only reason we're using. That's, there, am I missing? That's, I guess. So we don't need to be. So.
Well, that'd be pretty, this call, if we're going both, Jeremy or the call would be the same.
Sorry, no, the, like, the meeting for right now is included in the license we have in place, so it's not a tradition. Only when we get, we were in the form earlier, when it's a certain number above our license, it's going to be charged per group of hours.
So that could still be an issue, even though we're, we're in person, and we're doing, you know, causing, this is the same.
Correct. Right now.
And again, the intent is not to create more urge for us to kind of look. We want to try to simplify, stay as simplified as possible, change what we can to, to, uh, make things easier, but we, you know, um, if it's gonna cost the same, then we may as well keep Blue Jeans, right, you know? All right, uh, any other comments, question, comments on it?
Okay, Blue Jeans, not this about forming, but we use Blue Jeans for some of our other interactive meetings. And the one criticism I've heard is that it shuts people out. We set the number too low. I know it happened in one of the LSPAC meetings where a lot of people were participating and couldn't get in. Or if they're not in, they're shut them out. So I don't know if that's the number we're setting or whatever, actually we're talking with Blue Jeans. I did want to mention that, I've, I've heard that couple on, where the Blue Jeans is shutting folks out or keeping them off. So, I don't know.
This, this basically the number that we pay for, that's the baseline.
And so we might.
How better, I mean.
Yeah, we might want to be looking at that because that, those are the kind of people who may, either can't get in, says they came in later, and it was, whatever the number they made, they'll be. Thanks.
Oh. Yes, but it is, and, but maybe we can, or just, or we can free push it. I, I think we've always said, more committees decide if they want to come in or if they want to stay in, I mean, uh, they, you know, what committee meeting details in the ILC. Because I think, you know, before we were having committee meetings, I, I just.
That didn't work.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I said, yeah, that wouldn't work.
Ain't that wrong? You know, your committees can be helping.
Okay.
Because you can still spread out a little bit, but yeah.
Whatever, it's easier. It's just something, not something having to be set up, you know, or whatever, yeah.
I, I think the initial, the, the reason why I think it was on the agenda was because of concern about the cost. And I think that, you know, what I'm hearing is, uh, right now, there may not be another alternative. However, we did ask, we're asking that administration look at the spacing in the ILC, come back and let us know. We probably do this in the conversation. Right now, we're gonna stay with Blue Jeans. We're gonna modify, um, uh, some of the things we're hearing of the public, so that we can make sure certain information, name, um, relationship to district, school community, that kind of thing, and we're gonna keep that to minutes for now, right? Did I miss anything? Question? There's something where they let people in. They raise their hand. What I can hear you say is that they don't say their full name, and I don't accept that, and all the government, they don't have any way of interpreting what their school or role is, raise their hand. Um, I guess I, the way I was thinking about it personally, I'm gonna tell. We need your name, your school, and if they don't say that, I would just have to say, please give us your name. For right now, to be together. And I also will include in the instructions that we're asking you to turn on your camera. That. Use your full name. Use your full name, right? The letter C. I had one person last week that I didn't want them to just. You can reach out and chat, say, please go with your name, but for you to get on his phone, he's like. He could have just outside a phone, or a person give him. You, the new phone. Okay. All right, so, we work on that, uh, let's see, um. So, just in this category itself, if anyone has any questions, whether by around just operation, I was talking about that operation. Are, are things going well, going in terms of the operations being power, like others in local. I have to do some checks again. And, uh, kind of related to that, but we all get our material in advance. And sometimes I hear during board meetings, members making corrections or, you know, asking specific questions. Can it be for, you know, for call that if you have an individual question that really doesn't benefit a whole board or committee? Or there's a correction to the minutes we course, that you address that before you because sometimes it almost seems like a correction, you have an administrator on the floor. And again, that's, that, that's not a good optics for the community, when it can be handled in advance. You know, you can get. So, that would be the ask. As long as it's something that doesn't benefit the entire board, or if you.
Speaking of the chair, one of the things, I, I hear what you're saying, I think. Now, in particular, when it comes to the minutes of, like, the committee. Do you think, or would somebody, I don't know, like, other meetings, or whoever, get, there's, those people, so, find a way, whether or collateral. We also don't, don't give everything, all of it.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I know, and, 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 you know, that has occurred more recently, only because of people just, you know, should play, you haven't been there, but I, I hear that. Think that we, we support, we have. Um, I also, this is similar to Melanie's comment, I think, um, there's a difference between asking individual questions if you need clarity to neutralize and making assignments. And I think it's important for us to remember that in our bylaws, if you're directing, any of us can go to the superintendent to, um, uh, the legal counsel, if you have questions about. Internal audit, you're right, yes. We can go, anybody can ask questions directly of them. Uh, when we're asking the administration to do something, it's, and it's, you can do that, or make sure you copy board members so that it's, um, the board members can see, because technically it's an assignment. Okay, it's an assignment, so make sure you're copying everybody the same. Also be considerate of, you know, if you have timelines, when you're asking them to do that work and. Lots of extra stuff. Um, if you're requiring your actions to the board, well, certainly. We're driven, and it's supposed to be shared as well, where they're coming from. Just on a side of it, it's, it's somebody use up the Albert. So, the last thing, oh, I'm trying to think. On this one here, internal operations within our office. Are we good there, are people fully comfortable with going? Yeah, I didn't have any. Are there any questions? Oh, there is a question, though. Um, I have basically said to Phyllis and Matt, whatever the central office directive is around coming to work during pandemic, they are to follow that, because they will. But there is a question about whether um, visibly, or if they do take minutes there on hand. Uh, they're talking to me, like, you're okay with that, then, um, that's okay with the board. But like, if people go back to the ILC, they would have to come back through that time. Or can we, can we get that first? Okay, last one, more communication, always. You know, we, we always want to make sure that our messaging from the board is, um, what's the word, appropriate, or accurate, or timely, or consistent, whatever, aligned with the message. I sometimes, and I'm gonna speak for myself. Me personally, um, I have to get off Facebook. I have to get off social media. Because I, I, I struggle with some of the messaging that I see on Facebook, not only from employees to board members, but from board members to employees. And there's nothing, you know, I can't say that there's anything that I find illegal or, but I look at Ilaw, and clearly, board members can embrace that way, that when we talk about employee engagement, what that means to the message. I struggle. I struggle with some of the messages that go to particularly. Um, uh, so, uh, again, if, you know, social media, everybody has their constituent groups, social media, whatever. I would just repeat again, that whatever message we give out there, whether it be social media, whether it be on TV media, or whatever, it really should be a message that is a unified message and aligned with the district in terms of what our decisions were and the act. And, um, you know, I've had more recently, you know, and I talked to my work colleague, valid, uh, some disagreeing I have about how we approach. And I will continue that, if I have an issue, if me personally, I would just talk to them and say. I wish. But I think, again, how we represent and me personally, I, I just don't feel right engaging on social media with how stuff is going on, and they should be engaging. And it's not a chance after all. But I think it does have an impact on the board, that's just me. I was, I wanted to put that out there, everybody. Talk about it, how.
How do you know that there's teachers? They identify themselves with teachers, some of them.
I don't know all of these.
Yeah, I don't either.
Sometimes, sometimes people text me. Which, you know, if they know me, and they know, they may know me personally, or not text me, but they'll get that message. Like, uh, they'll send an email or something like that, uh, they'll say something. You know, regarding the board process or whatever, and, and me personally, I, I try to give them the right response uh, based on that, based on the message that I know is for district testing. And so what I'm saying is, I try not to get engaged with anyone's. Yeah, but, um, you know. But this is based on personal nature.
My individual, um, suffer, I said, involved with, um, I'm experiencing what's going on. I would, what I do, I. This doesn't pertain to that, uh, school needs of this area, something. And a lot of times it's, uh, I'm pumping that back. Day in, day out, if I see a street or a, a, a that I know exactly what's going on in a way, whatever the board or the district is feeling or not feeling, I will get involved, get on my authority, blah blah blah. Here's, on ILC, just be able to be helpful. Even the homeless, please, that Ryan, that, that article you circled, I was able to say that was, it's not on. Actually, hear that information, uh, with the administration, talk about our home, kids' trades homelessness. I will talk about it even in my last board meeting, with actually this, uh, uh, and people can't always, that we can't, so it's, so you just, if you, if, if sometimes, and that would be down the papers, it's okay. But often it does, oh, okay, that's, that's good that you've already been thinking about this or that. So, it, it, the sharing information, and it not that we all have kind of stuff, but I think it helps. Like, so you're right, it's, it can also be diminished, if you want to, you know, on the, but.
Yeah, if I be clarified, too, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, I think it's important for the chair. But I think what I'm finding, um, that I've found, uh, here, that, um, and the bylaws say, you know, like, if you go against, like, uh, TV okay, that, you know, your, your opinions are your opinions, you know? And you have a right to share your opinion. Now, while it may be legal for you to do that in an air of confusion and controversy and upset, I think personally, you have to be very conscientious and careful about separating yourself from the usual board. That's just my thing. You know, because it creates more confusion when somebody says, well, um, that this board member said this, and this board member said that, or that board member doesn't agree. I mean, to me, it just makes it look like we're not on the same page. But there's nothing illegal, I mean, I checked the bylaws, there's nothing illegal in our bylaws that says you cannot talk to it's just timing of the interview, you know, when they call you. Um, and let's be honest, they tend to call people that they know will talk to. You know, I, when they call me, I say, have you talked to Krista Boyer? You know, I'm glad to do an interview, but no, I will not do a spontaneous interview at 12 o'clock noon in this quarter's playoff. First of all, I have to pay someone. So, you know, I mean, so there are some personal things about it, but, you know, I, I, in transparency and open and honest about it, it's a little bothersome when I see that vibe. And even those people. From your, uh, uh, maybe, uh, go with it, uh, the bad end there. For me, experiencing, uh, I was like, uh, off of, I'm made, but I couldn't clear what was going on and having to defend the decision of a board because maybe one way, how did you know that this is going on? That for me is a different hand on the expectations of just respect for each other on a real kind of one day. So, for me, um, I'm always gonna say, I'm always gonna keep it, say, the thought of what the board members have had specific, uh, decisions, again, not that people have to tell you what they're doing without, but it's just good to have the kids up to the back and react to that in, in a way that's dismusful and respectful, um, because sometimes I felt like it was that I felt the board itself was calling my butt, and we were putting in purpose. And, 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 I'm, I'm just going to say about when it might happen. So, for me, that was, uh, very upsetting, and I didn't necessarily know it, but I didn't really know how to act to all of that, but, you know what I'm saying? My, my. So, that was just something different for me. So, not that people have to give permission, but that's, A, it won't be no agency, but again, I'm saying it could possibly happen for the sake of the vote of the board. But I'm just, I'm surprised. I'll have a thing, unless we get a call from the media. I'll usually text Krista and say, I gotta call from the media, send the copy. You know, instead of saying, go to Krista, because obviously, yeah, obviously people want to see you, like, officials out there. So, as long as I have something that's proud of me, that's really, really helpful. And, and secondly, if you have something controversial on the board, and it's before the vote, we can give our different opinion. But after the vote, we have to talk about what was decided, even if it's a four to three vote, and I lost. That's just kind of the standard ethic. But before the vote, you can say, yeah, I think that, you know, whatever, you know. And, and, uh, Krista does provide us on a regular basis updated and full time on the message. So, um, we all get that, kind of, kind of.
Yeah, so, two things, I mean, we're elected officials. And I think, you know, it's the balance of being a councilor and elected official. Well, you know, you don't always, a hundred percent have to always agree. And so I think that's, that's an interesting thing, if you would ever see city councilor, commissioners, or whatever, not, not feeling the need to engage publicly. Now, the one thing I will say, unquietly, I have never, at least not attempted to reach out before, and I will tell you that email that came from a kitty here, if she's listening, um, about, oh, your press conference, blah blah blah. Honest to God, here's the situation. I'm at my desk, in my office, and when she said, oh, okay, we'll drive to your house, I would just say, all jokes. And it's not just me, people have come to their house. On a Sunday, we're having dinner, what are you talking about, schools? I'm sure that happens everywhere. And some I know, others, and I've, I've never, what's that? Uh, in the grocery store, in wherever. But what I was saying about I got to reach out to. And, uh, the comic was, I, he had known, I forget what her name, he had talked to Mike the night before. How late met you. And so he said, hey, she did her story last night, um, I would love to get some information about, uh, the information of, of what. I said, well, I'm sorry, I'm on a conference call. Um, you know, about 12:30. Jimmy comes in and says, hi, what's the name? Here. I guess he'd come from the district. Where am I live? First call was to Krista. Second call was to Logan. And really, you know, what I thought was a non-interview because he asked me if we had the details on what, or if I had the details on what changed to make this go red. I just knew we were red. But all I was saying, trying to make this work, is, is really not any information. The point is, we have a board meeting on Monday, and we're gonna be given all that information. Now, how, how was, I have, I still haven't gotten that, because Carolyn reached out to me about it. Uh, so then I thought, well, I better, is it inappropriate? Clearly, it wasn't my intention, I would have reached out. But then I called Laura to apologize if it created any consternation on her end, uh, because that wasn't my intention. Truly, uh, the, the intent there was to say, like, we're gonna have that discussion on Monday. And so it wasn't like I said, oh, I disagree with this, I, I never said that word. It wasn't like this, but I jittery said, I'm looking forward to getting information on Monday. Um, so, you know, I.
Can I just say, Ryan, it wasn't, I, I'm not speaking about that specific incident, because I called you correctly.
Yeah, that's bad.
What I'm talking about is that, uh, and, and, and if I can be transparent about. What I'm talking about is that, uh, and, and, and if I can be transparent about it, I want to be transparent. There, sometimes it appears like self-promotion. It, it comes across as very self-promoting. Like, "Well, I didn't agree with that," or I didn't, and I'm like, okay, well, uh, as a board member, you're entitled, I feel, you're entitled to disagree. But in the public face, when we're trying to get some consistency or stability, that's what the media wants. They wanna hear just, you know, a different point of view. When I say different points of view, they, you know, they like stuff when you're disagreeing and all of that. That's the stuff that bothers me. You know, it doesn't bother me that anybody knows. You know, Mike is big on social media, you know? And I, I, I will say, Mike has changed somewhat, so his, he has done it. But, but a lot of times, it feels like they're picking out the pieces that they want to talk to you here, and it comes across as being very negative. It comes across as being not accurate or very negative. It wasn't, I was satisfied, you told me, I, I had to go with it. But on the other hand, they always seem to pick out certain people on the board. And my question is why? And they call me too, but I'm like, first of all, I'll call Krista or I'll call Krista or text Krista or something. But, um, you know, it's, I don't know what else to say about it, but we're supposed to be transparent, but we're not city council. We are seven elected, we're elect seven individually elected members. I agree with that, I agree, everybody has their own, and you can, whatever. But we are not council. And we, you know, our bylaws say unified message. Council doesn't have to do that, really. But I'm just saying, our message needs to be, it needs to align with, uh, what we said in our meetings is gonna happen, and, uh, it needs to be stabilized. It needs to help our community be stable around it. And I've seen a lot of that on Facebook, where all this stuff and people calling me saying, "Board members are saying this and that, it isn't true," or whatever. And I'm like, what, you know, they, in essence, they're saying board members are creating some confusion. And that's all I'm trying to do, that is that we can't do that. We have to figure out where that balance is. That's just my, that's what I'm, I'm either that.
I, I, I think what's important, though, if somebody is saying, "The board did this and I disagree," after we, and I, I hope you will tell me if I ever do that, because I, you know, I'm sitting like, I don't think I ever said, "Oh, I disagree with the superintendent's decision that the board approved." And, uh, yeah, and I think if we're saying, "Hey, I disagree," after we've agreed or voted, I mean, I think that's, that's important. Well, but I think what Melanie said is what how I believe, you know? And, well, we can have differences in opinions, but it's kind of like when you vote then.
Well, but that happened on June 29th. June 29th, we took the vote. Now, whatever people feel about the controversy around whether it should have been a full vote, that's irregardless. June 29th, on June 30th, there was an interview where he said, "I disagree," and this is why. And we're gonna change it. We're gonna, that's, it's not, you said, it's not ingrained, it's not the final decision. And, and, and I have struggled with that ever since. It's like, it was a final decision, maybe you didn't agree with it, but that was our final decision. Is that kind of thing that I think we get ourselves wrapped up in? We get ahead of the message or, or, uh, you know, in, in terms of, you know, our interactions? It's only that kind of thing. You have a right to say what you want to say.
Yeah, I'm in the lines.
What's that? As long as in the lines.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, and I'm just trying to think where, where is disagree? You know, the idea behind the blend and full transparency, what I heard from our superintendent is, "We need to have our truth." That's what I heard when I asked, which I like to always do, before we have any major vote. What I heard from the board was a slight majority, um, unless it was a new one. But, as, you know, was 4-3, was really set on 6 feet. Okay? And so, when the, so, everybody knows that people listening, you know, I don't disagree. That's great, and I've never had like a blood-based relationship. And, but I will say, it's been better since I've been on the board, frankly, uh, when I've seen him, whatever. And when he reached out to me and said, "Is there anything the city can do to help?" Well, then, what happened is, he tweeted, "I'm being held soon." And it said, "The city's, you know, spoke to board member master, city would love to help out in any way, 26." Whatever that was about. The, the, so, I will, I am sorry that I did something that caused more consternation. What I will say to that, though, was, in my heart of hearts, there was nothing impure about it. What I was trying to do is create a win-win. I mean, what I felt our administration thought was best for kids and what I thought for, it wasn't like I was saying I disagree with, uh, the 6 feet. It was, how could you do the 6 feet and allow our kids to do it? And so, you know, I apologize for that.
And, and he's leaving now, wasn't asking you. No, I'm totally happy. But I, but I think that is important, I mean, this is a board, this is when we're supposed to talk about how we function more, right? And so I think it's, I think it's important that we put this out on the table and, and just be honest, because I, I have often felt like that if we just glaze over it and we don't deal with it, then we have all these underlying things that, as we can solve of it. And, and I'm just here to say, if I feel like that any board member, and you are, you're welcome to do that to me, if you feel like that there's something that I say or do, or what, or question, whatever, please call me and tell me. You know, and I'm gonna do the same thing for everybody else. And I don't have to like the way you do your constituent business, I don't have to like that. But if, if, it does, you know, what I'm looking for is just to make sure that as a board, we have a message that's out there, that our people understand, that it's not confusing, and it doesn't look like that we're doing business as individuals. That's all I'm looking for. That's it.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, if that were to happen again, what I'd say is, can we have another meeting to discuss the potential of creating a hand-in? Um, and how, I mean, my, my, the, the, but triggered that whole thing to get bigger was that tweet. And when I found out that he, and Laura got me, and you're like, "Okay, well, no more conversations." Uh, all, that was, you know, the, so the, the way to approach that differently would have been, is there a way that we can do a hand-in? And, you know, is there a way the city or other partners can help us?
When I got in the conference, I had a comment, a bit, and he got in front of the 1:00 hour. And this whole conversation leading up to our vote, this conversation had been going on, uh, with trying to read information about, uh, options, uh, what things would look like. And I kind of felt that whatever was, you know, what happened, happened. I don't know anything about that, I just know when I got on guard, the board, if we could A, B, C, and D, we already voted. The vote is what I'm trying to find out from the, a bylaw. If we vote, that's it. But not, there's no win-win, we already had all this discussion at the 10 and 11 hour, never at 1:00. So to me, that defeats the purpose and, and they give a mixed message to the community that this is, uh, we're still entertaining these things when we're not entertaining those things. So that was a mixed message that they filled in. So I, I mean, I understand your, the underlying reason, but it just didn't feel right. It felt like we didn't know what we were doing, who we had, who were uncertain, and then it was the hope that this other thing was going on, and it's not, that wasn't a hope. That was, that was all, it wasn't moving forward from here. So that's where my frustration was hanging at.
We probably don't have to worry too much about the comments. We'll keep having this conversation, too. I could be happy about it.
Okay, well, I, no, no, I mean, it, it needed to be said, you know? We, you know, I mean, other conversations, we're both...
Oh, I just want to say something. We can, if, if someone on a, a board member who is on the prevailing side can bring back the same issue.
Yes.
So just because it's voted, doesn't mean it's dead. Right, whatever we, we're a 3 vote, there's always room for a change.
Absolutely.
But they have to do appropriately.
Yeah, they do appropriately. But I heard Pam say, "When it's over, it's gonna be gone," well, no, especially not when we're a 3 vote.
Yeah, we, well, not, we, thank you for clarifying, but the way that, right.
Not media in the boardroom, things where we should put that.
So just let me see one more video. So, the intent was to get information of if there was something, when I got the call, that I could bring back to them. And the mayor tweeting it was not how I expected. I would never have thought that he would have put a tweet out that kind of exposed it.
Okay, Brian, with all due respect, it was on TV.
You said it, I love that.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to beat this horse to death. We were clear about it, I think our message, and, and, and I'm not questioning that anymore. I'm not questioning it. But you were on TV and said, "This is not a final decision." So that's all I'm saying. That's it, that's all.
And that was like, you're right about that part.
Yeah, that little mess with, that whole, that whole conversation with Brian, we happened.
Simon's the next step. There, there's quite a bit, uh, there's some information that I will give to Ryan to summarize, and we can talk about when we put it back on the agenda, I don't know what happened, regarding some of the board operations stuff, yes? Uh, Mike?
I don't know if this is Simon or a question or, or votes for the superintendent. Um, is there any possibility to extend the deadline to turn those forms for the in-school remote option? I heard, I, I heard from a few, and then it became more, and then it became like enough to like say some kind of people didn't have it, which is why I screenshot of the form and I put it on LinkedIn, Facebook, everything. So like, here it is, share this, please. Is, or would that be statistically tough due to what you all know? Which is fine, that's the answer. Again, I'm sorry, I don't think, I, I thought it was before.
Um, did you do whatever you might try to do? I will say that while we're, apart from the, uh, the, I don't...
No, I know, that's what, okay.
Okay, what's happening is you get, and, uh, we're hearing down the ones that we do. We all aren't good next to the leaders.
No, if this, I don't, yeah. Then?
I had a couple, um, that were, had been inquiries about, um, this, this topic, about like the parents who, um, like, there's third option. I, I don't know if they're, we're ready, I'm happy to, towards, um, that, I don't know. Yeah, I'm good, like, that, okay. Sorry, what that translates to is, hey, superintendent, could I talk to you for a minute?
I will say that we do learn, now that we stand, Ernie and I, about having classrooms and not having to use devices in this classroom. Whether that's in person or in the classroom. Um, so, we're back, and I don't want to be done in sex fact, we're back to having a faculty meeting today. So one is, if, if you all want to make a decision that it's not using technology at all, so that the kids who are home just bring their supplies. So then all the good trade off. I'm not saying there's a plus, but there is a factor one is. The second is, um, we could put a laptop in the front of your room, facing the teacher's face. The stuff, it will limit the range of the teacher, in terms of where the teacher may be. They don't get a ton of room to do that laptop. Um, and then with a little piece done about the audio from the center. Another alternative is that where you could distribute a set of questions in, or you say, "Hey, I thought that was a really good idea." And I go through and say, "Here, all of you can do one vote. We hear some reason why you may not be able to vote," and then we say, "Go time." So, um, and the other alternative is they have a piece, they're saying, for, the 45th experience platform. We just put a camera in the back of every single room, which will take, will cost additional money and time to get that done all the classrooms. And I, I'm the opposite, with the number of kids we have, I don't know how many classrooms I could do. There are ballpark number of classrooms, how many classrooms have crossed into ballpark?
Three thousand.
Three thousand. And then we have also have the audio to go along with those cameras. So, and there's, now this part I will say, there's probably absolutely no way to have that happen in two weeks, unless we want to throw a lot of money at it and then see if there are the resources and beyond, we can support the passing, but not all the cameras and then do the audio and stuff. That was a field assignment. So, um, it sounds like a really great option with this, with this. We just, we have not, you know, figured. So, does that respond to your point?
Um, I, I think, I think so, I think this is so, so hard and so, I think one of the things, I didn't want to, when I sent that email, um, one of the things I was really worried about was, um, if you imagine a middle school student in a parentalized setting, even if you get 25% of those parents say they would like to do it, which teacher do you pull? Because they don't have a license to teach all, more, more, stand out in a lot of the actual interest rates for teacher. So, what that made me worried about was that there's just no plan on which you actually get a, 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 a proposal from the parent. Um, and if it's true then, that there are parents out there who have genuine mental reasons to buy, they don't want to give it personally, and they don't like the self-directed nature of C P. Let me create something, you know? And, and one of the things I even learned sense of that is that, um, if, if, if my understanding of this is correct, I was thinking about like the, you know, when T I said Monday, uh, you would limit technological engagement in a way that hurt our destruction. You know, I don't think I realized that that, that literally in some cases, that the fear is right, means textbooks. That, that, like, literally the way that children would be accessing textbooks is through the connectivity of the classroom.
So it's something that we, in some cases, social studies, that's online.
Yeah, this is, and it just, it seems like, um, you know, the further down we get, there, there just is no perfect. I think the thing, the thing that I'm, I'm trying to ask, very sure, maybe that's already done, and maybe you're really thinking of it, is just how big is this group of parents out there who, who feels fundamentally unsafe for a good that or reason with the, and, and, and what is the, what are the best possible things they want? Um, and that's whatever that is, uh, I just want to be able to go out in your faith and tell us I really want this nothing that sideways, um, for reasons that's wrong, and this is definitely.
We just have a very, very, various approach. We have looked at this over and over again, and we have thought of every scenario that we can come up with. So it is a... that we're just going to, now, 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 you have to do it at the school, just, so we've charged a large bill, able to make that streaming work, who's happy to do that. We, um, have to put a lot of different costs, because just like you, we really want the best that I did, and stuff, we don't want this to stop, we don't want to do companies, and there's never been any companies. But thinking about what we can do, to do, how can we do more, how can we do different? What we have not been able to figure out to do, and it's not because there is the intelligence in the room to figure it out, but there isn't a physical or limited capacity as a student classroom in the district, unless we want to, um, not only limit, but, but eliminate the in-school use of technology, other than that computer that's giving you the time or the camera that's in practice. So, um, if you want to start, in the future, we'll just have to be in the, I think that we'll have a better number, how many parents, maybe don't feel safe, next week and the next.
Let's begin this, sorry, I was going to say.
One thing I think that, I would say, here's a plan, and it's another thing to actually show you the high need today. So we'll have our kids on Tuesday, eight through, actually pre-day through two, and then seven, eight, and then the following week, we'll have three to six, and nine, twelve. We should get a, we should have a pretty good idea of how many parents need to not feel safe.
All right, and I, I just want to say that.
Um, I, we're, education's changing, and a lot of good things have happened as a result of COVID. We think, I mean, now, you know, all the rec centers and pools are gonna have internet, can you imagine that? They never had that before. And because our kids need to have access to internet, all the rec centers are being wired as a priority, or not wired, you know, that are as a priority. Uh, what I don't want to see happen is a lot of money going into a short-term solution that, in the big picture, isn't something we're going to use in the long term. And it may seem logical to parents that all you have to do is put a camera in there and stream, when it really, that doesn't seem to be a good fit with our long-term goals and what we've learned through this COVID nineteen. And especially if in three or four weeks, you know, the whole country goes purple, and we're back to remote, then that money is all set for not. So I'm in favor of looking at what's working, and what's going to work for the long term, and the positive changes we can make in the way we deliver education, and not just the short-term fix. And the other thing is that if people have extenuating circumstances, and, you know, the kids can't come, aren't some of those children on I E Ps and they're receiving special services anyway? And if they're not, maybe some of those children should be considered for medical I E Ps. And then they can get the extra services, instead of having the whole system redesigned. So, you know, that's my view sense. We, yeah, I, I, we cannot take the giant step backward by eliminating technology from instruction. We spent millions of dollars, both in technology and in PD, and who we hire, and whatever. So that would be, that would be bad. But I do think that the streaming thing is a long-term solution, not an immediate fix. It would be great if the, a kid that's absent, you know, could find a way to still participate in the classroom or whatever. My understanding of where the people are streaming, the teacher is sitting right in front of the camera, which is going to be debilitating to their ability to, to instruct, but they're sitting right there virtually all day, and people have been worried about the fact that other, the kids at home can't participate. And where they're streaming, the kids at home are not participating in class. They're seeing class, they're hearing class, sort of, but the audio is a problem. And then there's also a parent saying, I'm not sure that I want my kid that's in the classroom, the teacher, you know, when they, it does Pam or something, I want my kid to be on a camera. I mean, and seen by people that aren't even part of us. So there's a security piece. But I do think that streaming has a huge future down the road. So, I don't, I don't know that it's a short-term fix even possible, but maybe it's an alternative for a select few.
Assignments, yes. Did you have assignments?
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay. Um, anything, anything, any other assignments, just next to?
Clarity, the, the treasures I'll be presenting, um, on the 19th, as well, is it, is there an expectation that that vote will, the vote about that will occur? That's the next one after that, right, is current. So this is a presentation.
Pleasure, presentation on the 19th. Guys, okay. Thank you, guys. I'm going with this.
Thank you.
Meeting is over.